Okay, we're gonna get started. Tina, please conduct roll call.
Thank you, Mr. Antonio. Mr. Badger?
Here.
Mrs. David?
Here.
Mrs. D Pietro?
Here.
Mr. Frank?
Here.
Ms. Greenstein?
Here.
Mrs. Hayman?
Here.
Mr. Stoloff?
Here.
Mrs. Walsh? Mr. Antonio?
Here.
Eight present, one absent. Student Board Representatives. Ally Meltzer?
Here.
Michael Lacotta?
Here.
Thank you.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the republic which is standing in our nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone to the June 3, 2019, public meeting of the Wissickin School District Board of Directors. I'd also like to mention that prior to this meeting, we met in executive session to discuss personnel and legal matters. And with that, I'll move to item two on our agenda, which is list of meetings since we last met, just last Tuesday. And item three is a list of upcoming meetings over the next month, as well as our first meeting when this new school year starts in August 26. And I also want people to know that previously scheduled meeting for the Policy Committee on June 10 has been canceled.
Excuse me, Mr. Antonio. About the MCIU Legislative Meeting?
Yes.
That will not be a physically attended. That will be an online meeting.
Okay, like a conference call, virtual meeting?
Virtual.
Okay. No, at the same time, though. Yep, okay. Thanks. All right, next up then is Presentations, and we're gonna have our monthly Wissickin High School update from Ally, Michael.
Hi, everyone. So, the first thing I'd like to talk about is the art show that was hosted by the high school just two weeks ago, and the elementary schools had their own art shows this year. And I was very involved with the high school art show, being really involved in the art department with both classes and National Art Honor Society. And it was really fun being able to be there both nights and see people in the community come together to support Artists at Wissickin, and being able to recognize the talent of all of my classmates and people at the high school and middle school. It was just really cool to see all of that. And very immediately following that, there was a ceremony for the new Veterans Day Memorial that was unveiled at the high school, which I'm sure all of you were either in attendance at or actually saw. There's both a physical memorial and a wall with interviews and written portions, which I actually helped create as part of my grad project. And it was really inspiring to be able to sit in the audience and see the ceremony. Everything that everyone had to say was amazing, inspiring, and a really good reflection of the community. And being able to actually create these interviews and written portions was an amazing experience that I'm really thankful for. And I can definitely say that it's given me a better awareness of what our veterans do, and will hopefully help other students and community members get the same thing. And also, this Saturday at the high school, we hosted the Wissickin Valley Relay for Life, which is a big cancer fundraiser for the American Cancer Society, where people in the community gather, form teams, participate in activities, walk around, and it all goes to raise money. And it's a really inspiring event that we're hoping will draw more people from the community in following years, since it was just at Upper Dublin and moved back. So, we're hoping it's one more thing for students and community members to unite under. And lastly, in just two days, three days, sorry, the graduation will be held for Wissickin seniors. So, it's really exciting to see everyone graduate and move on. And I'm looking forward to going, and I'm sure a bunch of other people are. Oh, I'm not graduating, I'm just supporting people. I wish I were graduating, but, thank you.
And then also, two weeks ago, we had our prom over at the Sheraton Hotel, which was a pretty awesome venue. And I know a lot of my classmates had a lot of fun there. And then during this past week, and I think the week before, they just presented their graduation projects, which went phenomenally, from what I hear, especially from what I've heard. And like some of the highlights, there was the mini-thon, which was presented by a couple of the seniors. There were a lot of fundraisers, a lot of 5Ks. And there were like different coaches of youth basketball teams and other sports teams. A lot of awesome fundraisers, or money was raised for awesome fundraisers, because of awesome projects done by our seniors. And then also, this past week, Whistling, which is a new club at Wissickin, held their May Development Day, where all of the members, all of the officers of Whistling, got together and had like a field day sort of event, where we split up into teams and participated in group bonding events, which are gonna be the same events that'll be held for the freshmen, for their freshman orientation on August 23. And we were prepping and learning about these events so we can then hold them ourselves and have the freshmen kind of get to know each other and get to know all the officers. They feel more included in the high school environment when they come in for their freshman year. And then also, coming up over the summer is a reminder for the Summer Academy, which is where students can come in and prep for some of the courses they take during the high school their high school years, and also their SAT and ACT courses available over the summer, which I participated in last summer. And things have been awesome. We're prepping for the SAT over the summer.
Great. Questions or comments for Michael or Ally? I had a question about the Relay for Life event. Was it held at Wissickin for the first time after being held at Upper Dublin for a while?
Not for the first time. Four years ago or so, it was held at Wissickin, and then they moved it. It used to be really big at Wissickin when it was held there. Then we lost a lot of patients. So, we're hoping moving it back will help.
Great. Does anyone know what the forecast is for?
It was because of the construction.
Is that right? Okay.
I have to brag a little bit.
What's that?
I have to brag a little bit.
Oh, please do.
Part of the reason why it was really good, and I was gonna say, several years ago, is because my daughter was one of the co-cheerpeople for Relay for Life. And she was thrilled, and obviously, she's gotten bigger and grown up and moved on. But I can also tell you that she was diagnosed with cancer this past year. So, all of the effort and the passion that she had sort of come home to ruse for us in a really personal way. And we really appreciate everything that you've been doing. And I really encourage everyone to participate in Relay for Life.
All right, great. Great to have you back in Wissickin.
Thank you.
All right. With that, we are on to public comment. And this is the first of two public comment periods on our agenda. This one is for yours who have comments on agenda items. We have several speakers who have registered tonight. And actually, maximum number of speakers on a given topic is five, and I think we have the five limit for one of the topics, the autistic support classrooms. Before we get to the actual speakers, though, I'm gonna ask Jim to read a statement regarding the autistic support classrooms that are up for our vote tonight.
It has come to our attention that there is some confusion related to the district's plans to relocate the K-5 Autistic Support Program from Shady Grove Elementary School to Stony Creek Elementary School as part of the upcoming new construction project at Stony Creek. Right now, the district has a comprehensive approach to meeting the needs of students with disabilities. We have a highly trained and caring professional staff, and each member is committed to meeting the needs of individual students. Sometimes, students with disabilities can have their needs met in the general education setting, while sometimes, needs are best met in a more specialized setting. Regardless of the circumstances, it is very clearly the district's priority to honor the principle of least restrictive environment. When disagreements about what is least restrictive environment arise, there is a very clear and prescribed process that takes place in Wissickin and all other public school districts, spelled out in great detail by the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, known as IDEA, and Pennsylvania Regulations. With regard to the upcoming construction project, we are simply relocating the existing program to a different school. We have three classrooms at Shady Grove now that are used by the Autistic Support Program, and there will be three at Stony Creek for the same purpose. And that is so that we can convert the three at Shady Grove to regular classrooms in order to address enrollment growth at that school. So, in summary, it is the district's practice and policy to comply with federal and state law regarding program and placement of students with disabilities. When disagreements arise about a student's program and placement, we are fully committed to proceeding in accordance with the provisions of the IDEA.
Okay, thank you. Before I call the first speaker up, I want everyone to please note that instructions for speakers are included in the agenda, and to please limit your comments to three minutes or less. And with that, I'll call the first speaker, Christine DeLorenz.
Good evening, Christine DeLorenz Ambler. The theme for my comments this evening is convenience. This evening, the board will vote on a solution for the expanding enrollment across our school district. This solution includes moving three special education inclusion classrooms from Shady Grove, and including them in the new building, the new construction and expansion plans for Stony Creek. The moving of these classrooms is convenient for the school district. It frees up the needed space at Shady Grove without having to redistrict students and families to new elementary schools. As a parent of a child with an IEP, although he is fully included, I am a member of many, many parent groups of parents of children with disabilities across schools across the Philadelphia area. One of the biggest problems that these parents have is that their students are bused far away from their neighborhood schools in order to receive their IDEA education, or the education according to IDEA. It's problematic in many ways because their kids are not going to school with their neighbors. They're going to school across town, or 20, 30 minutes, sometimes even over an hour, depending on the school district. I understand that it's convenient, again, that word, for a school district to take all of those services and put them in one space. But isn't it better to put the child first instead of being convenient for us? Isn't it better for that child to receive the services they need in their neighborhood school with their peers? When we talk about inclusion, inclusion means making it so that child is fully included in whatever they would have normally done, even if they didn't have that disability. If they didn't have that disability, they would be in their neighborhood school. It's convenient for a district to do this in one space. When we talk about inclusion, I have a child that is included. And we say inclusion, but there are still barriers. Because inclusion does not mean, and there's a picture online, we see it all the time, of the three children trying to watch a basketball game through a fence. And they say, "Oh, we're gonna give them accommodations." And they give them little boxes to stand on, and now they can see the baseball game. Well, you know what inclusion means? It doesn't mean giving them those accommodations, those boxes, so they can see the game. It means making the fence a chain link so that they don't have that barrier at all. So, last year in sixth grade, my son's team had these wonderful options for chairs in every single classroom. There were little balls to sit on, balls and stands to sit on, stabulous stools. There were little seat cushions to put on their seats, where you can sit in a regular seat. And it was in every one of his regular classrooms, math, English, science, and social studies. He was very comfortable choosing an alternative seating arrangement because everyone got to choose one. Now, in seventh grade, none of his classes have any of those. And even though he has a preferred seating arrangement, a preferred seat that he learns best in due to his disability, it's not available to all the other kids. So, then it makes him stick out, and he's choosing not to use it. Inclusion means making sure everyone has an even playing field. Inclusion means meeting these kids' needs where they need to go to school. So, maybe we need to rethink our plans for moving kids to all three classrooms in one school and maybe make it a little less convenient for the district and make it a little bit more about meeting the needs of these students in their home schools and including them in the classrooms that they belong in. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Tara Connor.
Hi, everyone. My name is Tara Connor. I live at 831 Creekview Drive in Blue Bell, Pennsylvania. I am the mother of two beautiful twin girls. One has Down Syndrome and is on the spectrum. My other daughter is a typically developing child. I just wanna show a picture so everyone can see them. This is them. Thankfully, they were able to bond and learn together in an inclusive preschool. Last year, on May 22, we had our first transition to kindergarten IEP meeting. During that meeting, my husband and I were told that the team recommended that my special needs daughter attend Shady Grove Elementary School. Shady Grove is not our neighborhood school, but the team recommended placement there. The autism support classroom was the reason for our placement at Shady Grove. We were not expecting this placement because she was thriving in a general education preschool classroom with her twin sister. The district told me that my daughter would spend a majority of her day in that room. Inclusion with the general education students would only happen during homeroom, recess, lunch, and the specials. The school district... I'm sorry. Inclusion with the general education students would happen only at those times. She would not be taught the general education curriculum, only life skills. Meanwhile, her twin sister's placement is in our neighborhood school, Blue Bell Elementary. Her twin is learning all of the kindergarten curriculum, letters, numbers, reading, writing, mathematics, all of it, and thriving and doing wonderfully. At our initial IEP meeting, I expressed multiple concerns, especially regression of skills. We requested a second meeting to try to compromise with the school district. My husband and I just wanted our twin daughters together in the same school, in the same general education classroom. We were told that behavior therapy services cannot be provided in our neighborhood school. In addition, my daughter's twin sister was not permitted to attend Shady Grove so that they could be together. We didn't feel like our voices were being heard. Our concerns, we felt, were being dismissed. On multiple occasions, my husband and I tried to come to an agreement with the team. Any alternative to the team's recommendations that we proposed were not considered. Eventually, we made the very difficult decision to go to due process. We needed somebody who could help us. We didn't know where to turn. Eventually, during due process, my twins had to go to different schools. My husband and I split up to go to school events, such as orientation, holiday events, school plays, et cetera. They were often scheduled at the same date and time.
Ms. Connor, it's been four minutes. Can you please wrap up your comments?
Okay. I'll get right to it. Our schools need to be welcoming to all children in their own neighborhood and community. We should presume competence in our children with intellectual disabilities. These children should be provided with the necessary supplementary aids and services to be successful in the general education classrooms aside their typically developing peers. The least restrictive environment, not only is the right thing to do, it is the law. A mindset of inclusion and diversity is key to making positive change for everyone. Teaching our children acceptance of different abilities will improve everyone's quality of life. I envision a world where typically developing children can learn side by side with their children with special needs. I envision a world where my twin daughters are not separated to support an administrative convenience. How many other families have had the same struggles as I have? Countless voices that have not been heard. Please consider inclusion as opposed to segregation. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jenna Pando.
My name is... My name is Jenna... Sorry. Hi, my name is Jenna Pando. I have gone to... I have gone to go to school and at my home school, Blue Bell Elementary, Wissickin Middle School, and Wissickin High School. I like math, science, course, and gear, and child development. My favorite books are Miss and Men and The Great Gatsby. I like... I like being with my friends in cars. I will go to East Square, Burg, Cirets in 2020 to study fitness and child development. Please do not make more classes. Make... Ab... Be... Be... Abysshence, thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Robert Quinn Hall.
Hello. My name is Robert Quinn Hall. I live at 301 East Butler Avenue, Ambler, Pennsylvania, in the Ambler Borough. Last week, I asked the school board if due diligence had been done with regard to the number of autistic support classrooms presently operating at Shady Grove, and if it thus made sense to build the same number, to build exactly three segregated classrooms for autistic support at Stony Creek. That's going to be Agenda Item 15I1B. We've still not seen data supporting why we added the third classroom. But what we can see is that that caused troubles. Last week, I shared that in the fall of 2018, at the same time that that third separate classroom was opened at Shady Grove, students with special needs who had previously been learning in regular classrooms in the general ed setting, in preschools, and working with typical peers, were placed into that classroom rather than into their neighborhood schools. For due process hearings, those placements were found to be in violation of those students' civil rights. I have a summary of those rulings for everybody to review and look at. Over the past six days, I've heard from so many parents in our district representing a broad range of student diagnoses, needs, and strengths, who reached out to share their own stories. They spoke of experiences with Wissickin that point to aggressive negotiating tactics that disarmed and intimidated parents to press the placement that worked for the district over listening to and understanding the voices of the parents. I urge concerned school board members to take time this summer to reach out to parents and staff and hear what's happening firsthand. And when you do, consider if these hearings that you hear about, if these conversations are the outward signs of a healthy organization with a collaborative and trusting relationship with its parents and community. As a parent living through this situation, I've seen how parents and students, siblings, neighbors, and the district's talented teachers and staff all are impacted by our district's rigid approach to special education by segregating and investing in additional classrooms that need to be filled with a broader and broader set of students. Settlements and legal fees are only the financial hidden costs that you'll be adding on to the school board's budget if you approve building those three classrooms again. I and many other families in our district believe that Wissickin can invest in a wider range of supports and services that enable students to learn their least restrictive environments, whatever that means for each student. When we do, students' individual strengths and needs, not the investments of the school district, will drive the placement for our students. In the meantime, we simply don't have enough information about this proposal to invest in, and we don't have enough information to show that going to three classrooms was the right choice in 2018 to justify building three additional classrooms again in 2019 at Stony Creek. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Grace Rosa Bion.
Hi, my name is Grace Rosa Bion, and I live at 407 Gordon Road in Ambler. I have two children on the autism spectrum, one who currently attends Shady Grove Nicholas and one who will be attending in the fall. Every single parent ahead of me made points that I have within my own speaking points. They couldn't be more spot on, in my opinion. On the other hand, I also am here to speak about the success and satisfaction that I have with the Shady Grove program for autistic support. My kids might fall on a lower functioning scale, maybe, than some of your kids. They're both non-verbal, they're both not potty-trained, they're both high-energy, have a high need for sensory input, and have a very short fuse for sensory overload. I was in the field of environmental engineering before I switched into teaching, before having two kids that ended up being very high-special needs kids. I was incredibly apprehensive about the public school program that would be available to them. And I have made it obvious on more than one occasion that I could not be more overjoyed with the skill and passion that I've met at every step along the way for both of my kids, who, according to their needs, unfortunately, do much better with a lower student-to-teacher ratio, do much better in an autistic tailored program, specific classrooms. And unfortunately, the need is only gonna grow with the population, which conservative numbers are exponential, almost, in growth. On the other side, I would like to agree with every single parent that came up and spoke because the system is broken. I don't think anybody can argue with that statement. Education is a reflection of our government, and it's just a trickle-down of a system. There's lack of logic, sensitivity, and flexibility. IEP starts with individual. And I think what each one of these parents came up here and spoke their piece was that instead of working collaboratively as a team, we're set up as enemies. And it's parents versus schools. we're set up as enemies, and it's parents versus school district, it's parents versus the institution. The weight of what the parent desires for their child is largely overlooked. I think a lot of times, it's assumed that we are uneducated. And it's very frustrating because we're all part of the system, and we all have such a great ability to affect change. We can all fix these problems that are existing on an individual level, which is exactly what an IEP was designed to do. And unfortunately, it sounds like it has hindered the families in each of these individual cases more than it's helped them. With that said, I understand that the vote is not about the three autistic classrooms. I understand that inclusion is credibly high up there on the goals. I am a teacher myself. However, I also do realize the reality that differentiated instruction already places a huge burden on a regular ed teacher. So I would just like, I guess, to say that I can't speak highly enough to the specific teacher that my son has, who happens to be here, which is Brianna Troyer. I just want to read a tiny bit of what I had to say to Albany's about her.
Rose Beyond, it's been four minutes, so can you please summarize and wrap up?
Yes, sorry, I didn't have a lot of time to prepare for tonight. I just would like to say that I, I think I'm encapsulating both sides of this argument. Every single family had a most valid, well-spoken point. On the other hand, my kids are kids that need the autistic support classrooms, most definitely with very little inclusion. So I am both incredibly happy with the program as it's being run, and I just implore the board to think about ways that it can address individual needs in a flexible, sensitive way.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Carmina Taylor.
So it's absolutely ironic that, walking away from all of those public comments, it's the community speaking to the school board. And I find so many times that we're forgetting that the school board works for the community, and the administration works for the school board. So in those comments, and the irony of my questions, because I'm not going to speak, I just want questions because I too looked at the question and answers from last board's meeting, and I don't think they were correct. So my first question in relation to Resolution W 719, is it possible to have the job description for the employee under that resolution? Second question, who made the decision not to publicly disclose the salaries under those resolutions? And under Resolution W 819, what were the merits that determined the salary adjustment for this contract? Under that same subject, what were the total number of retirements for this year, and how many replacements are hires of color? I was here in 2006 when I advocated for more minorities to be hired. For the years of 1996 to 2006, there were zero teachers of color and administrators hired for a 10-year period in this district. So in 2007, we received 10 hires. And as of 2007, only three of those 10 remain working here in this district. So the last question is, how many teachers or administrators of color have been hired from 2008 to 2019? Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Diane Burgess. Oh, I'm sorry, Diane, I misread your form. Your, your, your topic is actually not on our agenda this evening. You're going to be speaking at our second public comment period on general topics.
How do you know? Because I didn't give a topic.
It says, says, is this an Agenda Item topping, and it's circled no.
I didn't have a topic written down there. Okay.
Is, is your topic related to an Agenda Item?
I just have questions, I just have questions. Or questions I asked last week, and I didn't get answers to.
If there are questions about our items on our agenda, then speak now. But if they're general questions, they'll be, can say them at our second public comment.
Okay.
Okay, and we do have that second public comment period on any school-related topic coming at the tail end of our agenda. We do have a couple speakers registered as. With that, we're going to move on to the report of the Board President. And as a reminder, last week, we went over several items that are up for vote tonight. We had nine items in total listed, but we had a 10th one that's added for this evening. And I'll get to that, but I'll just run through real quickly what those items are. Items one, two, and three, under the Board President, again, are related to the passage of our budget for next fiscal year. Item four is the library budget for next fiscal year. Items five through nine are essentially authorizing the administration, and Wade Coleman in particular, pay bills, solicit vendor bids, execute budget transfers, et cetera. And item 10 is the new one that was added for tonight. And that one is actually the appointment of two new student board representatives. As you guys recall, if you're here last week, our senior board representatives, Joel and Jenna, are retiring. They're moving on to college. And our junior student board reps this year, Michael and Ally, are going to be our senior board reps next year. And we need to round out our roster of student board reps by bringing on two more junior board reps for next year. And two candidates that we're going to be approving tonight, or voting on at least, are Olivia Welsh and Paige Benning. They're both Whisahican High School sophomores. And most of the board had the opportunity to meet them last week. And I think I can say for all of us that we were all very impressed and are looking forward to appointing them to a two-year sentence, I mean, a term, as student board reps. They'll be serving in their junior and senior years and joining Ally and Michael at the board table throughout the next two school years. So we're excited about bringing them on board. And if anyone has any questions or comments about Olivia or Paige, feel free to ask. Okay? Any comments or questions, since we discussed items one through nine last week? Oh, okay. Then we're going to move on to the report of the superintendent. Jim?
Okay, thank you. The two voting items I have are exactly as we reviewed them last week. The informational items, a few very important dates, as was noted earlier by Ally, I think. The graduation for Whisahican High School is this Thursday, June 6th. And the last day of school for everybody else besides seniors. And I'm sure the juniors will be there through the bitter slash awesome end of June 13th, which is Thursday. And then one, one note from last week was on Thursday, May 30th, we had our scholarship night at the high school, an annual event. And it's, it's rather striking to me to, to get the feeling of just how much the village matters in, in raising all of these students and helping them, and then not just through their K to 12 years, but beyond. That evening, over $105,000 of scholarship awards were handed out, 138 total awards. We had actually some review, a, a person who's there, one of the donors, one of the sponsors of this scholarship, wrote, sent us a note today from the class of 1973. And among other things, he says, "I marveled at the diversity of both the awards and the recipients." But, and that, that comment struck me because I think it speaks volumes as to our commitment to excellence in every respect of that word. So I, another public thank you to all of the people who were involved in the scholarship, and another public congratulations to all the recipients.
All right, thanks, Jim. Moving on then to the report of the Assistant Superintendent, Gary.
Thank you, Mr. Antonio. Just want to add that this past week, last week, I had an opportunity to sit in on the high school graduation projects, the senior graduation projects. And each year, I find this to be a particularly enjoyable experience. And I must say, I had the occasion to hear five of these presentations this last week, and the topics were wide-ranging in the experiences these students had. Not only were they extremely strong in content, but the experience of the student volunteering or serving in some form of an internship led them nicely into a career path that was clear. And often, the topics grew out of a passion, an individual passion of the student. I was really, I, I just wanted to be complimentary of the program, of the students, and of the poise and the presentation style of all of them. They were absolutely awesome, and it was so exciting to hear. I, I would like to highlight one that I was particularly struck by. It was called "A Trail to Leadership", and it was a student who's a Boy Scout. And over the past eight years, this student really has done an amazing job of breathing life into the scouting in this area, raising the number of troops from two in the Philadelphia-Montgomery area up to 22, almost single-handedly. And he talked about a way of doing it through passion and through excitement and enjoyment. He showed, in his presentation, he showed a trailer loaded with twigs and branches and drove it into Philadelphia to one of the parks, Fairmount Park, I believe, and invited all boys in the area to come and have an experience of actually building various structures. And it was a day of fun and contributed to the growth of this industry. He, he really spoke about a leadership that was really amazing. And for a student of 17 years of age to be able to do that over the past six years has been quite impressive, and his sharing of that with the group was really quite amazing. It just goes to show the power of a student who is matched with something that's really, he's passionate about, and has an opportunity to learn more about and to share, and did an amazing job. So awesome, graduation projects, big fan, and hope to see more in the future.
Great. Thanks, Gary. Report of the solicitor, Shell.
Thank you, there are no new items this week.
Okay. Report of the Board Secretary, Wade.
There are no changes.
And Board Treasurer, Wade?
There are no changes as well.
Okay. And with that, then, we're going to move on to our Board Committee reports. Ronnie, anything new since last week?
No, no new items.
Okay. Curriculum and Technology, Ron, changes since last week?
Yes, there are two changes. Gary, if you would go over the, the differences between what we had before and now?
Sure. On the tuition wave student list, we had an addition. So it's the same list with one student addition, a recent move that we had to put in. Second, we also had an addition to our extended school year roster for the coming summer. And then the third one was a tuition contract for the balance of this school year, an additional tuition contract as well.
All right, thank you.
Any questions or comments about those items? Okay, then we're moving on to facilities and transportation. Tracy's not here this evening, but Wade, do you cover any changes since last week?
Yep, there are no changes to the, the, the items we'll be voting on tonight.
Okay. Finance Committee, David, anything new since last week?
Thank you, Joe. There are no new items, there's one changed item. The second in the list with the Facilities Committee ends in the phrase, "Subject to final review and approval of the Business Administrator." Otherwise, nothing's changed.
Wade, can you explain, is that just an additional clause that was added?
So we're working through the details of the architectural and engineering contracts. I believe what is in the packets is going to be final. But if there is a late-minute question or change by a lawyer, engineer, or architect, then I'll be able to change it and notify the board.
Okay, thanks. Questions, comments about the finance items? So, let's see, item 15I1 in the finance section, that is, that part B of that is related to the new autistic support classrooms that are going to be built as part of the Stony Creek renovation and expansion. And that's, I think, at the topic of much of the speakers who spoke earlier. The action item that we're going to be voting on, though, is really, it's about authorizing our architect and engineering team to do some designing and put together a bid for the actual construction project. I mean, a small piece of it is with the new autistic support classroom. But just to clarify, although it says three new autistic support classrooms, the intent isn't to create more autistic support classrooms than what we currently have. We have three at Shady Grove, and with the construction, completion of construction of three at Stony Creek, we will then burt the Shady Grove classrooms into regular classrooms and have three at Stony Creek instead. So the district-wide autistic support program currently at Shady Grove will simply be moving into new spaces over at Stony Creek once this project. And the second item is related to the contract with Brezeline. I know that we had some conversations amongst a few board members back and forth. So what I want to ask is, when we go to the consent, agenda approval later, if anyone wants me to pull aside any of these items for a separate roll call vote, let me know. No? Okay. So with that, then, we're going to move on to the Policy Committee, Carol.
Thank you. No changes, everything is the same as it was last week.
Thank you. And report of the Personnel Director, Kathy.
Yes, thank you. Any new items were highlighted on Document K1. And in addition, as a change to item number six, which we discussed last week for the WASA agreement, will be effective 7/1, 2019 to June 30th, 2021.
Comments or questions about those? Okay, the next item, report of Board Representatives. We haven't had any of those meetings last week. So we're going to move on to
Excuse me, there are a couple updates on the Legislative Liaison. I just received these notes today.
Okay. Sorry about that.
One new item is in the bills proposed by Governor Wolf as far as the starting date for compulsory education. Right now, in the state of Pennsylvania, believe it or not, it's eight years old. Wolf has suggested an incredibly radical idea, that it be lowered to six, which I think most parents would say huzzah, most of it. And the other one is that the, there's still some attempt to work on the charter bills, especially the cyber charters, but nothing is expected to actually make it, make its way through. Beyond that, everything is the same. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, you know, the compulsory age law in Pennsylvania always struck me as odd. I guess you don't really have to have your kids go to school until third grade. It's really strange.
I would hesitate to say, but this is Pennsylvania.
Right. And so we're low, we're making the compulsory age first grade. Kindergarten's still not a required grade for kids to go to school. So, but at least it's some progress, right? With that, we are at the voting segment of our meeting. And since Tracy's not here, don't have to pull aside the list of payments item for a separate vote. And so I'm going to do a single motion, or ask for a single motion, to approve items 15A through 15K.
So moved. Second.
The motion has been approved and seconded, moved and seconded. Any final comments or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's passed. Okay, now we're at the second public comment period, where we'll hear comments on any school-related topics. And again, the instructions for speakers are noted in the agenda. And please limit your comments to three minutes. And our first speaker is Diane Burgess.
Thank you, Joe. My name is Diane Burgess, I live at 314 Railroad Avenue. On last week, my school board meeting, I talked about an incident that I witnessed. On last week, my school board meeting, I talked about an incident that I witnessed with a principal saying to parents that they weren't allowed to speak to the child's teacher. So, I want to know if there's a policy or something that allows a principal to say to a parent that they are not allowed to speak to their child's teacher? And my second question is about advocacy. I've been an advocate from the West Hamlet community for over 20 years, and I don't know about this new practice of not allowing advocates to come with the parents. I understand that it's a part of the IDA, but we're talking about regular students and parents. Because of the lack of black administrators and teachers, we've been allowed to come into the school and advocate for years. So, if there's something new that's going on, I would like to know about it. If there's, you know, some type of changes, I would like to know about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Grace Kim McIntosh.
My name is Grace Kim McIntosh. I live in the Wissahickin School District. On the surface, the school district appears to be diverse and inclusive. However, the Wissahickin schools and classrooms do not reflect our community. Our community that we live in is rich in diversity, from race, cognitive and physical abilities, to language and religion. Unfortunately, vulnerable populations such as children with disabilities are not regarded as valued members in our schools. I encourage the school district administration and the Board to answer the following questions. Does the school district administration value diversity or merely tolerate them? Or does the school district administration consider having a disability, is that a part of diversity? Does this school district believe that civil rights are a privilege for everyone or just most? The school district's mission, we are states that we are a learning community rich in diversity and that we work by empowering each student to excel to their fullest potential. But when students are segregated, students with disabilities are placed in segregated classrooms or consistently pulled out of general education, diversity does not exist. When students have low expectations placed on them and differentiated instruction is not provided, student empowerment does not exist. Through ongoing actions, unfortunately, in this school district for over five years, it seems that the school district administration does not demonstrate a culture that every student is valued and belongs here. From the recent due process rulings this past spring, we have seen that the Wissahickin School District has not considered meaningful differentiated instruction or supplementary aids and services for the purpose to enable students with disabilities to learn and access the general education. And I believe that the existence of the segregated classrooms themselves justify them as the default placement for all children with disabilities. This Wissahickin School District has set low expectations and has not presumed competence for students with disabilities. Instead of recognizing and appreciating the students with disability's strengths, there is focus on their diagnosis, there is focus on what they cannot do. The Wissahickin School District has pressured families to place their children with disabilities in segregated classrooms without considering input from families. There is no legal requirement for students with disabilities to master prerequisites or to keep up with their typical peers in order for them to learn in the general education. Yet, this is what families are being told. So, why is this important? And why are we here? What are the three key reasons why it's important? One, it's the federal law. The Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, or IDEA, of 1975 lays out the premise that school districts are responsible for educating everyone regardless of their ability and to start with the general education setting. Two, inclusive education benefits all students. Hundreds of studies show clear and consistent evidence that inclusive education has short and long-term benefits for all students. Students without disabilities, did you know that students without disabilities made comparable or greater gains in math and reading when taught in general education classes with students with disabilities, and they were engaged in the same instruction?
Ms. Kim McIntosh, you're over time.
Okay, I'm going to wrap it up. Inclusive education doesn't have to cost more. That's a myth, and it's about creative and effective use of current resources. Going forward, first, I would like to have the school district leadership be proponents of inclusive education, starting from the Board, a culture of belonging that can permeate through to all the administration, the teachers, the staff, and the students. We urge the school district leadership and Board to take this opportunity, over the summer, to reach out to experts, families, and administrators to define its position, create a plan for inclusive education, and declare Wissahickin Schools more welcoming and valuing all students aligned with your mission statement. Families are willing to work together to support this shared mission for the benefit of all our children and the future of our community. My son Ethan is six years old and has a disability, and like every other child, he belongs here. All our children belong here, and we look forward to collaborating with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Carmina Taylor.
So, this time, I'm coming as an alum. Again, irony that we're talking about inclusion of the parents in the school community, I'm talking about inclusion with the alumni. So, last week, Bernie Gordon asked what the criteria was to be inducted into the Hall of Fame, and I just found the answer from the district really confusing. So, I have these following questions as it relates to the Hall of Fame. Number one, who made the decision to change the criteria for alumni to be inducted into the Hall of Fame? Number two, when was that decision made? Number three, how many alumni don't work for the district that are on the committee? Who are they, and when was the current committee formulated? Four, who made the decision to initiate the Wissahickin Athletic Hall of Records, and when was the Board notified, when was it approved, and why? Who made the decision to defunct or defunct the Athletics Hall of Fame? When the Board, when was the Board notified and when was it approved? My mother was inducted into the Hall of Fame in 1991. She did not have postgraduate accomplishments at that time, and she was inducted. Now, my mother was a Mensa. My mother had great postgraduate accomplishments, but she did not get inducted into the Athletic Hall of Fame because of her postgraduate accomplishments. Lastly, I looked at the answer that you gave in terms of the potential of who would be doing the research related to the Athletic Hall of Records, and it's contingent on whether students are willing to research Wissahickin High School records. So, the question is, if a student isn't willing to research the Wissahickin records, what's your Plan B? And I didn't come tonight with a whole bunch of black men to come here and argue their point about the Hall of Fame. Because of the way you answered that question, they are totally disgusted and dejected. So, I'm not going to keep bringing up people up here to tell you time and time again how disheartening it is, that you're not validating the people that deserve to be inducted into the Hall of Fame. I'm just going to keep asking the questions, because what the common theme I hear tonight is there's a disconnect with the school community and the school district. There seems to be a disconnect between what we want to be included into the school community to what you guys are allowing to be included in the school community. This is an election year. We have five incumbents or four incumbents running for school board. I think the community has every right to ask all the kinds of questions that relate to validating their voice. Every week, or every time there's a board meeting, someone comes here and talks about how their voice isn't validated. As a community member in this school district, white, black, different socioeconomic paths, different categories of students and families, what is going on? This is a public school system. The community, you work for the community, and the administration works for you. All sorts of kids in this school district are being marginalized. How much more do we have to say this? How many black athletes that made this school program haven't been honored? Seriously?
Ms. Taylor, you're over time. Can you please wrap up?
Yes. So, I'm really asking you guys, we're all asking you, to take the time to really hear what we're saying. We don't, I don't want to be an adversary. I don't. I want to work with you. I want to work with you guys as well. The NAACP wants to work with this school community and its residents. So, I think it's, you know, summertime, I think there's a lot of outreach that can be done, and I think we can start off the next school year on a positive note when we figure out how to include everybody into the school community. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Christine De Laurentis.
Christine De Laurentis Ambler. Wissahickin is lauded for its excellence, the school district, and rightly so. The great majority of the students receive a first-rate education. Unfortunately, while the school district excels at educating typical students and even those that are gifted, the parents in this room can tell you over and over how the district fails with the students that need a more individualized education. If your student is a square or circle peg, like everyone else, they fit nicely into the square and circle holes that the district provides for their education, but if your child is a triangle or a star, they don't have any holes developed for them. The district expects them to change their shape to fit into the existing ones that are available. I know, as a parent of a child that's a triangle, I refuse to cut off his corners or make him smaller to fit into the circle or the square. Our special education system is broken. While the district follows laws, they are missing the spirit of the idea of an individualized education plan that meets the needs of our children. I challenge the school board and the administration to do what is best for all students, and I have three things that I think would help. One, look at every classroom, kindergarten through high school, and make it accommodating for everyone. Make it so they all have flexible seating. Make it so the sound isn't overwhelming. Make it so the fluorescent lights aren't buzzing for the kids that have sound issues. Make it a sensory-friendly place across the entire building so that a child does not have to go into a special inclusion room to feel comfortable in their school. Then, train all the regular education teachers to instruct all students focusing on disabilities and challenges and how those challenges and disabilities are met in the regular ed classroom. I know that there's a lot of lip service that is already being done. I can tell you story after story of teacher after teacher that calls my son out for things that are his disability, Ben has a really hard time sitting in his seat. Well, yeah, we know that. Ben's really disorganized. Well, yeah, that's why he has a goal in his IEP for organization. I shouldn't be hearing things like that because that's his disability. Regular ed teachers should be more available to know what those disabilities are and to understand them and not give that as negative feedback to a parent. Lastly, I challenge you to form a group where the district administration and special education parents work together to meet the needs of our children. Have this group work together to better identify kids, to better help parents navigate the rocky, rocky road to ask for help, better navigate the paperwork that is required. And I've spoken here at this podium before how it took me three months to fill out paperwork to get my child evaluated when he was in kindergarten. That shouldn't have to happen. We need an easier path to help our students, a quicker path, and we need more help for parents that they're educated on the process and that the process is easier. There shouldn't be these hoops to have to jump through. I think a parent group with the administration, working with the administration can go a long way to making better communication and also enacting better change across all of the schools K to 12. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have our final speaker for the night, Grace Rosa Bian.
I actually wasn't planning on coming up twice. I did just want to bring up, since I was here, and we are talking about new construction and the plans, I would love to implore the Board or speak with somebody to have the ability to discuss putting funds aside and construction plans aside for a sensory gym for the autistic support program. If you look at any of the autistic-specific private schools or preschools, they'll pretty much tell you that the effectiveness of a given day for the learning for some of these kids is just based on the ability to get their sensory needs met, then they have a much better chance at attending, being engaged. And I did write an email to Kelly McCluskey and Dr. Albany's. I just didn't hear back yet, but this would be the perfect time to discuss a budget. I would even be happy to go on GoFundMe or donors choose to raise funds if it would be applicable to get private funds donated, but I think it would be an invaluable tool in a lot of the Special Needs Kids Day to be able to go and visit a sensory room. I know, like, the OT room right now just has a swing. It's nothing really kind of specifically tailored with multiple... The gym that I'm thinking of has multiple swings, it has multiple equipment, they have bouncy balls, stretchy resistance bands, things that just are specifically tailored to meet their sensory demands. Again, I really don't want to set myself up as trying to be an enemy of either side right here. I'm trying, I'm trying a little bit to help the bridge the divide. I just would like to caution against targeting the autistic support classrooms as the target of your grievances, because I really do think it's a much bigger problem than that. And inclusion is incredibly valuable, but specifically tailored classrooms are also incredibly valuable. And that was one of my apprehensions sending both of my kids, was that they would receive the individual attention and specifically tailored programs heavy in ABA. So, please, let's just caution against the attacking of inclusion or anti-inclusion, because it does serve a purpose for certain kids. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and with that, we're on to board comments. Yeah, comments from my fellow board members.
I have a comment.
Yeah.
I just want to follow up on the last speaker, which is there, there should be no enemies in this room. I think the board has listened carefully, as we all do every night, to the speakers that have come and told us what their concerns are. And I, I believe, without exception, that everyone at this table has the same concerns. And I also want to express faith in, in our teachers and our administrators, who are passionate about each and every one of our kids. And so I hope we can resolve this together and not make it a, anything that has to do with an enemy. We, we have an issue that we can solve together, and I think everyone on this board and every administrator is committed to doing that.
Thanks, Pat. Well said. Anyone else? Okay, then can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Seconded? All those in favor, say aye. Meeting adjourned.